...to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with whom we give justice for all.
Is it green?
Yeah.
There we go. All right. Sorry, everybody. All right. Next up on the agenda is public forum. Everyone who has signed up has three minutes. First up is Jenny and Barry Woods. I don't see Jenny or Barry here. So we'll go on to Reverend David Kennedy.
My time.
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. If you want to take the mics, take your name and address, and y'all have three minutes.
That's not enough time, but Reverend David Kennedy, eighty-seven Africa Lane, Lawrence, South Carolina, mayor and council and citizens. I'm here to say that Fountain Inn has a long history of not treating black folks right. Some of people remember me protesting when a young man, Jabo Johnson, life ended in the city police. It's a horrible story that never should be forgotten, people like the Shell family. But this thing happened to our people across the land. Racism is fresh and alive. And when you have an all-white citizen group, it tells me something about Fountain Inn like some other states. The city council, school boards, and other places have been politicized. This won't look like heaven. Heaven is diverse. But when you do have an all-white council, you need somebody to be able to listen to the concerns of people who don't look like them. And I've been witnessing my spirit. You can fix any kind of way you fix it, but each one of us will face the judge. An incident that happened to the Jackson family should not have never happened. They spoiled Mr. Jackson's record. They didn't want to pay him his money back, as was promised by this city. And now that they put up nets because black people are black, they can't help it. God paint people the way he wants to paint them. Racism is fresh and alive. And when they called the police, the woman trying to protect her property had no trespass signs out. She ended up in jail. The brother come to see about her. He ended up in jail. The judge, thank God, kicked his case out. Balls, bags full of balls coming over in her yard, and white guys bullying their way at her. Now, Trayvon Warren was killed because that guy said he stood his ground. He had no weapon. When Ms. Jackson stood her ground, she got arrested on her own property. No trespassing mean no trespassing. That's a liquor game. We have to end that kind of hatred and that kind of racism, not only in Fountain Inn, but everywhere. This is what God's want, and this is what we should do. I want to compliment Ms. Naomi, Ms. Woods, Ms. Sandra Wood, personalities. And I want to compliment the Assistant Chief of Police, Ms. Woods. But this is, as I close out, I just want to say, we're not going to sit still. I happen to be the president of the Lawrence County branch of the NACP. It's a simple matter that you all need to handle without our involvement, but we're not going to stand still while this continue. We're going to increase our protest. And I'll be bringing a sled in with me, but I don't want to move without having the permit in my pocket. But I do want to thank the people who took my, accepted my twenty-five dollars, and appreciate you, Mayor, for listening to me. But trust me, in the name of Jesus, when we calm, the NACP was started by white people. That's a fact, because they saw how we were being treated. But whoever the councilperson over in their area, y'all need to be fighting for her. Everybody needs to be treated right. And when your citizens have issues and concerns, listen to them and try to bring a solution. But I tell you, you don't want us in the city like we were here once before, because we're not going to stop, because God is still on the throne. He will rain down His justice where corruption is. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Reverend.
All right.
Next to sign up is Nancy Garrison.
Sure. I'm Nancy Garrison. I live at one sixty-four Garrison's Arena Drive, Fountain Inn. I do not live in the city, but we're not far out of the city, and the city's creeping our way because of annexation of development. We've been very active in Lawrence County, and thankfully, in Lawrence County, we do have a moratorium at this time on development, because Lawrence County, all we have is our ordinances. We do not have zoning. We do not have an up-to-date comprehensive plan. We do not have a land use map. So the ordinances are the only teeth that we have at this time, which we are thankful that they are working on. But my concern is that if these new ordinances pass, it's going to create larger lot sizes and such as that because of what's happening out mainly Durbin Road of Fountain Inn. And my concern is that these developers are going to come to the city for more annexation, because we know Durbin Oaks has already been annexed into the city. Now, between Jones Road and Happy Valley Road, there's more land, you know, that's being proposed as a subdivision in Lawrence County. And we are just asking Fountain, the city of Fountain Inn, to be very cautious how we develop it. We're not trying to stop growth. We're not trying to, you know, we're trying to control the type of growth we are having. We're already seeing the traffic issues and such as that going on. And then, right past Happy Valley, down Happy Valley and Sullivan, we have nine hundred and forty-one lots and one hundred and thirty-six townhomes coming in over the next few years. So imagine what we've got coming on Durbin Road. So I'm just here to plead to the city, please be cautious what you allow the developers to do and what the developers are coming to ask you to do, because our area there is very much being infiltrated, and it's going to, you know, it's definitely going to cause infrastructure problems that we already have. I mean, we have roads that's not the city's, the county's, that aren't large enough for two cars to pass each other where this enormous development's supposed to go. So I just come pleading to y'all, please be cautious. Please don't let the developers decide how the area around Fountain Inn and our small-town feel that we've always had. We know we're growing, and we know growth is good, but let's do it in a very responsible kind of way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nancy.
Moving on, we have the City Administrator Report. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. I can give you guys some updates on some of our projects. First, I have an update on our new natural gas and public works facility. This afternoon, we received our land disturbance permit from DHEC. So will we move in dirt out there soon? On our Main Street, Main Street, Streetscape, Jones to four eighteen, Co-Transco, which is the engineer for the Greenville CTC, has begun the design work for this project. They started this week. Sanctified Hill Park construction has commenced. I would encourage everyone to take a look at the progress so far. It's pretty remarkable. And we held our groundbreaking ceremony yesterday, and it went really well. They, contractor anticipates pouring sidewalks within about three weeks, so they are moving fast. For our woodside connector project, we have submitted a letter of intent to GPATs on our intention to apply for a third transportation alternatives grant, or TAP grant. And then Splashpad Parking Lot, we will be applying for a MASC Hometown Economic Development Grant to assist with the funding. That will be later in your agenda today. Also, we applied today for a special RIA grant for twelve million dollars' worth of sewer rehab, with a, requires a two-million-dollar match, and we will be able to use our SRF loan as the two-million-dollar match. We are certainly hopeful that we get the full amount, but we actually applied for it in two phases. So we've got a six-million-dollar project for Phase One and a six-million-dollar project for Phase Two. So if, you know, the money is short, they're going to have way more applications than they have money to fund, that hopefully we at least get a phase of it. Some of our upcoming events, we do have Bike Night this Saturday from five to nine P.M. on Main Street. We have our Civics Academy coming up in October. We are still looking for more folks to sign up. That is a free eight-week course that will take residents and business owners behind the scenes in our day-to-day work to make the city of Fountain Inn great. And then also, our annual Pinkalicious event put on by the Chapman Foundation will be held on October eighth. Wanted to mention that in the human resources side, that we had six vacancies for firefighter, and we have six offers accepted. And so those are all in the postoffer screenings right now, and those have a tentative start date of September twenty-sixth. And also wanted to remind everyone about our longevity awards at Luncheon, which will be held on September twenty-second from eleven to one. I put on their activity center, but actually, I think it's Sweet Catherine's. Over in the gas department, our gas consumption for August of this year was up nine and a half percent from last year and over fifteen, almost sixteen percent from the August five-year average. It seems like every month now, we are exceeding the year prior and exceeding our five-year average. As far as the rates go, the September price did increase about sixty-seven cents, but as we get closer to winter, we have hedged within our prepay, and we've purchased additional capacity for the winter months. But further moves may be necessary depending on weather predictions and the market. And then, last month, I informed you all of the Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration, or FEMSA, grant, which was an application for about three-point-eight million dollars of federal grant money to rehabilitate some of our steel-natural gas lines, and that is currently under review at the moment. We hope to hear something back, hopefully, within the next thirty, sixty days. Over in Parks and Recreation, our flag football game started on August twenty-second. Our opening night for the Miracle League season was on August twenty-eighth. They took a week off with Labor Day. They'll return to action this upcoming Monday. We're calling it Miracle Mondays. We'd encourage everybody to attend, just to watch, or it's a really neat thing to see, and I would love for you to even volunteer to be a buddy at some point. And then with that, are the Miracle League restroom that we have with G-CRA, it's a G-CRA-funded project, that is going out to bid today. And that is going to be a handicap-accessible restroom facility right next to the Miracle League field. Our tackle football games at Emmanuel Sullivan Sports Complex start on, started yesterday, and they start on the twelfth at Fountain Inn High School. And fall baseball and softball games start the week, start next week, and our fall volleyball games start the week of the nineteenth. For our comprehensive plan update, RFQ, we narrowed down our list of consultants and firms from six to three. We did interviews. We interviewed three of those firms, and we are now kind of awaiting some pricing, contract information, getting a feel for their timeline and their community engagement, and then we'll be bringing forth a recommendation to council here soon. In Fire, they have their EMT class starting up again this month. They will be hosting a week-long training for new hires, first week of October, and they are putting together RFPs for their budgeted capital items that you all approved in the budget for this year, and that will be released soon. Our friends at the Yon Center, over October fifteenth, seven-thirty, we've got Seven Bridges, which is the ultimate Eagles experience. It's a tribute band. They've played there before, and it's a, supposed to be a really great show. And then, on December third, at seven-thirty, we have the Ball Brothers Christmas Special. And then our Chamber of Commerce Thirty-Ninth Annual Ant-Het Festival will be on October first from nine A.M. to five P.M. And with that, I'll be available for any questions, Mayor.
Just to go. You may not be able to answer this, but I think we have staff here to maybe answer. The weather's not looking great for the weekend. Is there a backup plan for Black Night?
I don't believe there is.
Then I'll be rescheduled.
So the event is permitted rain or shine, so at this time, it's going to go on as scheduled unless it's complete washout. But that is an outside event, so that is up to the Lancaster Motorcycle Club.
Okay. And in our new sixth firefighters, are all of them going to have to attend the academy, or do you hire some that are certified?
Two will have to attend the academy.
And four are certified?
And four are certified. And they've also created a little rookie school of their own, which we're really proud of. The team has come together to create that experience for the new ones, but we only have two that are not.
Good. Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
I only have one, the sewer grant project. That's wonderful. I don't know if the public interest, I know I would kind of break down what's in that application and how far that gets us on sewer rehab projects. I mean, I hope to get it out, write a twenty-page paper on us, not getting it wrong, but I understand.
I'll prepare a memo on that.
But it's great to go after that, I appreciate it. Do you want to? All right. Hearing none, move on to the consent agenda, which is to approve August fourth, twenty-twenty-two, special call in the city council minutes and approve August eleventh, regular council minutes. Is there a motion to approve? Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Any questions? Hearing none, all is fair. Say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next is unfinished business. We have a couple of ordinances that deal with how things, we did this last month, go through, whether it's procedural or Planning Commission and Zoning Board. So as Sean requested, I'll take it, as he said, because he's asked some right of him. I'll quote him on that. But first up is second reading ordinance twenty-twenty-two-dash-eight, which is essentially creates the ability for council by unanimous consent to alter its rules for one item at one time during one meeting. So for instance, later on, you'll ask that you consider second reading on something for a seven-day waiting period from Planning Commission to council to give staff and applicants time to adjust materials. If something were to be severely pressing that needs to happen in a special call meeting, you know, two days later, we could do that by unanimous consent and just ask, you know, any member can object to that and have it nullified. I'll make a motion to approve on second reading ordinance twenty-twenty-two-dash-eight. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Toddison. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all is fair. Say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up, the second reading ordinance twenty-twenty-two-dash-nine. This relates to board attendance for boards and commissions for any board or commission the city may create or currently have. It requires seventy-five percent attendance for the scheduled meetings that that board or commission may hold for planning commission. That is the first Monday, unless there's a holiday. Same thing about for board zoning deals, it's the third Monday, unless there's a holiday. Special call meetings, don't apply to that. We'll hold them to that.
Or reschedule.
Or reschedule. Yeah, yeah. So this is for those stated meetings that are regularly scheduled. It provides also that members with cause, regular amendment to do that. Attendance is not automatic. It does allow for them to, it's just one of the metrics that handy use, and it's clearly stated. I'll make a motion to approve on second reading ordinance twenty-twenty-two-dash-nine. Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Mr. Don. Any questions?
Sorry about that.
You're good.
My mic died. I was trying to speak real loud, but I was hearing no questions. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is second reading ordinance twenty-twenty-two-dash-ten, which is zoning approving procedures. This states the seven-day waiting period between a planning commission action and city council consideration. It also deals with potential ties during a planning, for a planning commission ruling in that a tie would result in a no recommendation being made to council. That item would come to us, and we would, we would then vote on it, at which point, a regular majority would provide that recommendation. I'll make a motion to approve on second reading ordinance twenty-twenty-two-dash-ten. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is second reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-two-dash-eleven, which is zoning petition procedure. This is the last bit of cleanup language around our code, saying that the mayor's vote carries more weight. This eliminates that. It goes to the two-thirds of those present and voting. I'll make a motion to approve on second reading ordinance twenty-twenty-two-dash-eleven. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Bell, it's your turn. Next up is second reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-two-dash-twelve.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance on second reading, amending Chapter nineteen, Traffic and Motor Vehicles of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fountain Inn, South Carolina, nineteen ninety-two, as amended, to add section nineteen-six, speed humps. The purpose of this ordinance is to provide for the evaluation and selection of roadways for the installation of speed humps. This ordinance spells out the process for requesting the installation, so a request for the installation of a speed hump must be in writing and submitted to the Director of Public Works. It also goes on to talk about the eligibility requirements. One is that for a city road, it's got to be city-maintained. It needs to have a minimum twenty-foot travelway. Needs to be classified as a residential collector, residential sub-collector, residential access street. It's got to be in reasonably good condition, as determined by our Public Works Director. The roadway must be a two-lane residential road with a posted speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour or less. Roadway must have average speeds exceeding the posted speed limit by at least ten miles per hour, as determined by a speed limit study conducted by Fountain Inn Police Department. It can't be primary access for commercial or an industrial site. Each resident living adjacent to that road, and no more than three-hundred feet, and eighty-five percent of the residents living adjacent to it, and no more than thirteen-hundred-and-twenty feet from the proposed location, must sign that petition. And then, if it is a DOT road, there is a lot of rules and regulations for getting a speed hump on a DOT road. That doesn't change. So if the neighborhood that was wanting a speed hump and it was a DOT road, they would need to request that from DOT. And then it spells out our evaluation process. The applicant must provide written notice to all the residents that live in that area. And the Director of Public Works must receive positive feedback from that, from the Fountain Inn Police Department and the Fountain Inn Fire Department. And then, our Public Works Director would make a recommendation to me, which then I would make a recommendation to city council on whether or not to place that speed hump there. The design and construction, possibly in your packet, you have...
I think we did last, last month at least.
Right. We have...
And it's in here today, yeah.
We have just the exhibit of the flat-top speed hump. That would be the only one that we would allow. All signage, the pavement markings that has to meet DOT and kind of uniform traffic control standards. Can't be placed in the location. It would interfere with stormwater, utilities. And then, the biggest thing, I think, is the payment. The applicant would be responsible for all costs, including design, construction, installation, maintenance, and removal.
All right. Is there a motion to approve on second reading ordinance twenty-twenty-two-dash-twelve? Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. Oh, yeah, this is our city attorney.
I think one of the prior ordinances references speed bumps and the other references speed pumps. So I always want to adopt a consistent, whether it's two bumps.
Okay.
I think it got updated on this one.
On second reading, it is speed humps throughout.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for catching that. Mr. Clemmer, I think, made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to new business, emergency agreement with SafeBilt for building official services. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I'm asking council to authorize me to execute an emergency agreement with SafeBilt for building official services. It is necessary for us to retain services of an outside contractor to perform building official-related services, and we have utilized a third-party building official since twenty-thirteen, and that contract ends September thirtieth of this year. And to reduce the impact on services and staff, we recommend that SafeBilt services begin on Monday, September the twelfth, for a term of one year. The term is twelve months. It has the option to renew for another twelve months. I think our recommendation would be, prior to that twelve months, we would probably go out for actual procurement, RFP, RFQ. We can terminate this, either party can terminate this agreement with a ninety-days written notice, with or without cause, no penalty. And the rates by contract are scheduled to increase on January one, twenty-twenty-four, so that would actually be after the twelve months, and then every year after, based on the Consumer Price Index, but can never exceed more than four percent. This item is budgeted for in our, in our current fiscal year. However, SafeBilt does have some higher rates, and so we've done a fiscal impact analysis, and we believe that entering into an agreement with SafeBilt at this time this year, we project we would exceed that budget by approximately forty-two thousand dollars. One of the main reasons why we selected SafeBilt to be this emergency procurement building official service is that, A, they're a national firm. They're not just in South Carolina, they're all over. But also, they have a whole list of other services that they can provide, that they've provided rates for. It's not to say that we have to use those, but it's something that we can. They, they offer permit technician services, if that was ever needed. They offer code enforcement services, which we do plan on having them help us out with, get our code enforcement ordinances in better working order, have some better processes and procedures for condemnations and things like that. If they offer planning and zoning services, zoning permit review, so if our current planner and zoning administrator was out for an extended period of time, our building official would be, this company would be able to step in and provide those services for a temporary period of time. They, in their, in their contract, they state plan review turnaround times. So when somebody submits a permit for a single-family home, they are committing to providing their comments within five business days, and then after the applicant, you know, responds to those comments, they're committed to providing their second comments within five business days or less. Multifamily issuing comments within ten days, same with small commercial. And law... Multi-family issuing comments within 10 days, same with small commercial, and large commercial, industrial-type of projects within 20 days. And so I think if you, if you go around at least the region, I think that would be extremely competitive for our, for our contractors to receive permits within five, 10, or 20 business days. And with that, I would recommend you authorizing me to enter into that emergency agreement with SafeBilt.
All right. Sorry. I'll make a motion to execute the emergency agreement with SafeBilt for building official services. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Don. Any questions or comments?
Is our current third-party vendor going to be surprised if their contract is not renewed?
No, sir. They have been, they've been notified via certified mail and email that their contract ends on September 30th.
Is the applications that are in or there, like the permits that are in, are they still that far behind on them?
Yeah. We had a meeting, was it yesterday, to talk about transition and how we, how we go about that. There will be some permits that just won't, that our current provider had reviewed, but they're just, there's, there's not enough time for them to release the permit this, this month, and so the new firm will have to take a look at those. Inspections shouldn't be a big deal, but the plan review, midstream on some of these are going to be interesting. We will have to do some communication on our end to let anybody, everybody that has an outstanding permit know that, hey, we have a new building official. It's going to be imperative that the architectural and engineering services for all of those building permits know that we've got somebody new that's going to be looking at it.
On that point, for communicating with those constituents and applicants that have applications pending, I know that it will probably welcome use to a number of folks that we are getting a different, just a company to help with that process, but to the extent that you can make it a great priority to communicate with those folks, please do. But I do think it will be welcome use from there. Thank you for doing the search and for bringing the recognition.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of authorizing the City Administrator to execute the agreement with SafeBilt, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is our 2022-8 Resolution for the Municipal Association Economic Development Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution committing the City of Fountain Inn to providing a local match for a municipal association of South Carolina Hometown Economic Development Grant and following its procurement policy when securing services and products with the grant funds. This is something that I've asked you all to approve pretty much every year that I've been here. Unfortunately, we've never been successful. When, in looking at the list of recipients every year, they tend to be smaller communities, a little bit more distressed communities, but it doesn't hurt to apply, and so it's a max grant amount of $25,000. And then for our size city, the local cash or in-kind match would be $2,500. And so we plan on applying to, for this grant, to help with our splash pad parking lot project.
Great. Is there a motion to approve? Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Sanders. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up are appointments. Mr. Bell?
Right. Mayor and council, Judge Duarte and Judge Hawkins were appointed on September 12th, 2019, for a two-year term, so they're past due to be reappointed. And then Judge Hand, our chief judge, she was appointed on July 11th, 2020, so she's a little bit past due. I would recommend reappointing all three judges for another two-year term.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Is there a motion to reappoint Judge Rebecca Hand, Judge Anthony Duarte, and Judge William Hawkins for two-year term? Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Any questions or comments? Thank them for continuing to serve the city. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up, we have an executive session item for discussion of matters relating to proposed location and provision of services for Project Ostrich. After coming out of executive session, council may vote on items discussed during executive session. Mr. Bell will take that in there? Correct?
Yes.
Okay. And we'll go in the comments room. Is there a motion to go into executive session for that reason? Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? We are now going into executive session.